Good evening. I am Kim Melnick, Vice Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM on this 10th day of May 2022. Mrs. Rye is out of town for a family funeral tonight, so I will chair, I will be the chair's designee for this meeting. Members of the public are also able to observe this school board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Present in chamber are Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Owens, it's time for public awards and recognitions, and we're so excited.
I am so excited. Tonight, we as a board have the pleasure of recognizing Division students, teams, and staff who've been awarded or recognized during state, multi-state, or national competitions or events. And with that in mind, we are pleased to announce the school board recognition recipients for May 10th, 2022. This evening, we are happy to recognize the Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, or better known as NJROTC, students from Green Run High School. Let's welcome this amazing group of individuals. And I'm going to recognize them by name each. You'll hold your applause until the end. First, we have Alex Abad. Tatiana Anderson. Aminara Bakayako. Alan Valderamos. Sherwood Buchwid. Colin Campbell. Joseph Cantinella. John Cantillon. Bryce Donahue. Alexander Ernest. Okay, Jaden Gerber. Tasneem Hyder. Caleb Holland. Denise Huley. Ellis Johnson. Harvey Labina. Louis Malma. Amira Mallow. Ahmad McDaniels. Logan McKelvey. Sonia Mendez. Brayden Messick. Eileen O'Hara. Jasmine Peoples, Peoples. Julia Ravino. Abigail Reynolds. Carlos Rivera. Kylie Tarkington. Evelyn Tate. Ryan Visage. Isaiah White. Samuel Woolard. Commander Brown and Sergeant Robles. And although not in attendance with us today, we also want to make sure we recognize Sierra Allison, Chrissy Council, Alexander Ernest, and Ethan Kabidin. We can clap again. So these students recently participated in the Area 5 Drill in Athletic Uniform Personal Inspection and Academic Championship Competition at Norview and Lake Taylor High Schools. Students at Green Run compete in Area 5, which consists of schools across Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, and Washington DC. Throughout this competition, Green Run not only placed in every category, they also took first place overall in drill and athletics. Their numerous awards in every category earned the group first place overall for the championship for the ninth year in a row. Way to go, Green Run. And this win only prepared them for the national competition that took place in early April in Pensacola, Florida, where they took fourth place overall. This year was especially noteworthy, given that the other top five schools there nationally were able to continue competing through COVID, which Green Run did not. And for those unfamiliar with NJROTC, it's a leadership program designed to give students a head start. NJROTC helps students develop self-discipline, self-confidence, and leadership skills, which are all necessary to successfully meet life's challenges. A student does not have to join the military to be part of NJROTC, but there are great opportunities for those who wish to do so. So, amazing job, everyone. Congratulations to all our outstanding students on this remarkable achievement. And this concludes the recognitions for this meeting. Again, congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening.
And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. All right, by Mrs. Manning, second, Mrs. Hughes. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hands.
Vice Chair Melnick, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. All right, there is no superintendent's report this evening, so we will move on to the approval of the meeting minutes. Are there any modifications to the April 26, 2022 regulars board meeting minutes as presented, as you received them? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Mrs. Anderson makes the motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Riggs, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
We have nine ayes.
Thank you.
And, and we will have one abstention for, for Ms. Franklin being absent at the meeting.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Okay, the school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Persons not called to the podium to address the school board are asked to be respectful of speakers so that the school board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each speaker's comments. As a reminder, each speaker has three minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. Once the speaker's time has expired, the speaker should stop making remarks and leave the podium so that the next speaker can be cued to speak. The school board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Our first student speaker will be Carter Hope Barmore.
Welcome, Ms. Barmore. Just one second. There you go.
Hello. Hi, I'm Carter Barmore attending Lanstown Middle School. As of April 6, 2022, Lanstown Middle School lost one of the biggest puzzle pieces for many people. Tonight, I'm here to speak for myself alongside 400-plus people who have feared the same for me and my school. As I stated, Lanstown Middle School lost one of the biggest support systems and just in general, a wonderful human, Officer Tyler Hughes. Officer Hughes is actually watching tonight, which I would like to say thank, say one of the biggest thank yous for not only being my, one of my trusted adults in Lanstown Middle School, but for others as well. Now, Officer Hughes does everything from having conversations with us, making sure we are where we are supposed to be, to helping administration staff when there are threats and/or fights, and keeping us safe while in the building. Who is going to do this now that the city feels the need to remove the SROs from 20 to 27 schools? The city says they're, they are short-staffed and need more police to be able to do patrol jobs well. Isn't the safety and security of education spaces just as important? Also, the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' goal is to welcome a safe and fostering environment, isn't it? Well, it's not just me who feels like this isn't provided. The presence of an SRO opens the door for us to be able to build relationships with law enforcement and go to someone about school issues/safety concerns. The SRO presence also is helpful to administration staff when there are safety concerns. Tonight, I would like to also spotlight what some of my peers, parents, and staff had said about Officer Tyler Hughes. He made me laugh and made my day, day better. He is one of the few nice people at our school, from Ava. I'm signing because my son said he feels more safe having the resource officers at the school, and the officers have built relationships with the kids and staff, from a parent. He also talks about life and the future with kids and will sit there and listen to kids fully, from Hannah R. He calms me down when I'm having a mental breakdown, from Aleah. Officer Hughes gave me a positive attitude and uplifted my attitude, says Aleah. Officer Hughes helps me with civics projects, from Molly. So, you're taking away a huge puzzle piece to our school. I have spoken to the Virginia Beach Police Department, but their statement was, there's a shortage of manpower at the oceanfront. Well, please think about how many kids there are at school.
30 seconds.
And how there'll be no security and manpower held in education environments. As I close my speech tonight, I would like to ask for Tyler Hughes back at Lanstown Middle School as we finish off the school year with less than 30 days, or even have his presence a few days a week. I would also like to ask for the SROs to be in other schools as well. I will not stop fighting for our SRO, Officer Tyler Hughes, until we have a change. I hope you understand how much this will help parents become at ease with their child's safety, students have a trusted.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy.
Welcome, Mrs. Slindy.
Thank you. That was very nice to hear the voice and so proud of all the junior ROTCs. So, good evening, Chairman Rye, Vice Chairman, oh, well, she's not here, Vice Chairman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kathleen Slindy. I'm the VBA president. The conversation this evening has been very interesting. My comments are about employee retention. It's no secret people are leaving education largely because of its poor compensation, but they are also leaving the profession because of the unreasonable expectations for work outside of contract hours and the lack of voice in the workplace. In short, it's workplace dissatisfaction. The workload requiring hours of planning and training has increased to an unreasonable level. There are now mandatory summer PD hours and digital learning summer summits. During the school year, the annual mandatory employee modules, training modules, and this year's Canvas training modules all needed to be completed on individuals' time. If you do the training modules during your planning at school, you lose the planning time, and if you do them at home, those are unpaid hours. And that's outside of the real work of planning for instruction. During COVID, virtual teachers, virtual education, we learned that we had, we had additional planning time on Mondays, and it was eye-opening. Not having to plan after school and on weekends was really great. Our friends and families said that this was normal. Educators experienced a better work-life balance. Unfortunately for many of your employees, not only is the balance off, but the workplace they experience is unpleasant and sometimes degrading, and this is unacceptable. They need to work in a respectful atmosphere. They need and deserve that. Often when employees speak up, they experience punitive consequences or retaliation from their supervisors. It's hard for this to show up in a climate survey if employee, and it might show up if employers trusted the process. I would agree with Dottie that only 50% response rate is not good. When you talk about meet and confer versus collective bargaining, you want to believe that those two things are equivalent, but they are not. When there is no written agreement to keep both sides accountable, things do not change. One of my colleagues said it this way. We need to start with a professionally designed and defined contract. Nothing changes without clear and concise language in our contracts. We need everyone to, to understand and be held accountable for their jobs, not just the staff in the classrooms. And right now, we need every employee capable and willing to work with our students to stay. Every employee in VBCPS must be willing to help others succeed, not just our students.
30 seconds.
Our coworkers and our, and those they supervise. The proof is before us. Public school employees have skills that value, that employers value and respect and need. There is no doubt in my mind that you believe everything added to the plates of educators in the past 10 years is important, but you want too much. People are no longer willing to work under these conditions or to work outside the contracted hours for the return that they get. They've reached the tipping point. The return for investment is too little, the ask is too big. Your employees are wary of waiting for change.
And that is time. Speaker two has not checked in, so our next speaker will be Paula Chang.
Welcome, Mrs. Chang.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to speak briefly on the VSBA contract that you're going to vote on tonight, and I know you will approve it, and I think there's no question about that. But I am going to say this, that it is a lobbying group, that it is inconsistent with the values of what individual parents want for their children. And part of the proof of that is leaked VSBA video from this year. And I'm not used to doing this, so you'll have to forgive me if it doesn't work quite right, but I'm going to play some of it, that what the chief lobbyist was opposing when she spoke at a conference this year. Hang on.
The Virginia School Board Association trains every school board member in the Commonwealth. According to one Virginia school board member, the VSBA trains all free thought out of new members. They scare us into submission. Earlier this year, the VSBA had a legislative session. School board members were told this session would introduce them to new education bills coming up for boot. These bills contain language that parents have been requesting. Pay close attention to how these Republican-sponsored bills are presented to the school board members. The first bill gives parents the rights to review instructional material, opt their child out of material they don't agree with, have access to all reading materials in the library and classrooms, be alerted to and be able to attend all public school board meetings, review the superintendent's budget, limit the teaching of divisive gender concepts, and require students to use the restroom and locker room that corresponds with their biological sex. The VSBA chief lobbyist Stacy Haney described this bill as.
I think what she said is a Republican agenda bill, and so that basically had to go. They also, in this video, and I'm happy to share it with anyone who'd like it, they oppose the idea of charter schools of parental choice for schools. They oppose limitations on family life based on the transgender teaching that the parents want their students and their children to have. And I think that the idea that this board would take thousands of hard-earned tax dollars from parents and citizens and use it to pay lobbyists to oppose their own desires is really just very appalling. I like the word for you guys with appalling. So, I would recommend that you reconsider this. I don't think that's going to happen. But I think you would need to show again that you have some interest in what the parents want and not what VBEA or the Virginia School Board Association or anybody else wants. And one final thing, I'd say, Mrs. Slindell, I agree with her that the teachers need better pay. I agree with her that there needs to be better situations for those who are in this school, and I hope she would join me, and hoping that it, one way to find some of that money is to cut the fat and the waste out of the budget.
And that is time.
Including with this.
Our next speaker is Kelly Whitehouse. Welcome, Ms. Whitehouse.
Good evening. I'm here to address yet again what happened to my little girl on the school bus. You're all aware. I'm not going back into that again. If you're not aware of that, I cannot help you. Since I can't get a response from any member of this administration, I will read to you the email that has gone unanswered to you. I understand you cannot speak back to me. I understand there's not to be dialogue, but you cannot unhear what I'm going to say. Dr. Spence, you, sir, are nearly impossible to reach personally. Many calls to your office have either gone unanswered or transferred to another department where helpful info is not forthcoming. As I'm sure you're aware, I have severe grievances and concerns about how the abuse of my daughter on a Virginia Beach City public school bus was handled. I have irrefutable proof that I have been lied to about many aspects surrounding this, and unacceptable lack of attention has been given to this. I reported this to CPS myself because your mandated reporters failed to do so. There are plenty of violations that are seen and heard on this bus surveillance tape concerning the neglect and abuse of children. The school viewed this with me and chose not to act. I also contacted the school resource officer myself, who was not aware of this incident, and he was quite perturbed that a parent approached him with it and not an administrator. I was, I sought and was granted charges against the actual abuser. We do have a court date for that. I will let the judge handle her. I filed police reports. I spoke with the Commonwealth's attorney staff. I have legal counsel to halt the runaround I was being given, to just get a piece of paper to fill out a FOIA request. That's ridiculous, unacceptable. We're still waiting on a response. The response we were given on the very last day that was allowed was insufficient. My attorneys have let Mr. Sutton know this. He's yet to respond again to it. I requested all of the contents of the hard drive to be given to me. Only a single day was made available. When I asked, where was the rest of this tape, I was told, because I have concerns about what had happened prior to the incident, I'm absolutely positive of. I was told that there's not a surplus of these tapes to go around, so they're automatically erased. Again, I have reason to believe more than once my daughter was abused on this bus, and now mysteriously, there's no proof of it, which will look bad, and I expect sanctions to follow this. I can go on and on about what I know to be true about the administrators of her school personally and professionally. Their moral turpitude needs to be called into questions.
30 seconds.
Eating tickets. This woman dressed as a villain for a school event. I think that's inappropriate for children of special needs. My daughter is a three-year-old, nonverbal, autistic daughter. And I mean, that's, it's ridiculous what she's been through. I'm aware of Holloway versus the Virginia Department of Education. Do you really want to be named as a defendant in another multimillion-dollar lawsuit? My daughter's human rights, educational rights, her civil rights, and her rights as a protected person under the ADA have been violated. Fix this.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Kathleen Brown.
Welcome, Mrs. Brown.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, and I'm here tonight to express my concerns about some of the materials that are available in our school libraries and also to express that I oppose the renewal of the VSBA membership. So, there's many inappropriate books in the school libraries. I'm sure you guys are aware by now. They're available for student checkout in our schools. Here is a small sampling. Gender Queer, a book which depicts graphic illustrations of two minors engaging in oral sex. This book was challenged, and Spence and the administration decided it was acceptable. I'm over here, Mr. Spence. Here's another, The Handmaid's Tale. This book is about rape and bondage and has several sex scenes pictured. How about Saga, a graphic novel depicting sex scenes and orgies? These are just a few of the graphic novels available in our Virginia Beach school libraries. Any justification that a book has received awards is pretty irrelevant. There are many types of literatures and movies that have received awards that are inappropriate for the schools to supply our children. Using the concept that our children can learn this on the internet is a pretty despicable excuse, in my opinion, for placing it in the school libraries. When we drop our kids off at schools, the school doors, they do not become your children. They are our children temporarily in your care. The schools do not belong playing a role in helping children explore sexuality. There was a very good solution to these types of literature being on the shelves in the Senate in January. Senate Bill 275 proposed that parents would be notified if their child wanted to check out a book that the law defines as grooming material. It could sign an opt-in form, opt-in, not opt-out. Partisan politics aside, this should have been a pretty agreeable compromise. Parents then would get to decide for their personal children, and the parents that want it could have it for their children. You could implement this here, but you have not. If parents don't know the books are on the shelves, they cannot opt out. Not finding a way to provide parents with notification and opt-in leaves parents to believe that you want the kids of the parents that don't want these books to have them behind our backs.
30 seconds.
Instead of doing what's right, Virginia Beach schools played a role in funding the partisan group that fought this bill. The VSBA showed up to the Senate Subcommittee and stated, we are the VSBA, and we oppose this bill. This is just one example of why the school board should withdraw their VSBA membership. The VSBA is a partisan group paid for by the taxpayers of Virginia Beach, approved by our so-called nonpartisan school board.
And that is time.
And the extremely partisan majority wants to continue funding it.
Welcome, Ms. Luxen.
Call me a rebel, but I love banned books. As a child and teenager, libraries were my sanctuary. Books gave me an escape from the chaos and abuse I endured at the hands of authoritarian parents who desperately tried to control my life, which ironically led me into a forced marriage and pregnancy at 16. We see examples of parents just like mine stand up here denigrating others because we don't share the same Christo-Fascist views as they do. First time I saw a pornographic magazine, I was 10. A boy on the, on the school bus shoved it in my face. He stole it from his dad's collection of magazines. Wouldn't be the last time I saw pornographic imagery, but I never forgot that the boy's father was the church pastor two streets over from my house. Self-exploration taught me about masturbation, not my, my kindergarten class like a school board candidate would have you believe. People will try to convince this body that certain books are dangerous or pornographic. Books may challenge perspectives often held by sexist, racist, and homophobes, but they aren't dangerous or pornographic. Graphic novels and memoirs of people's lived experience cannot be censored because it makes you uncomfortable. For those who haven't read The Handmaid's Tale, I found a short summary for you to put the graphic images in context properly. In a near-future universe of rising sterility and falling birth rates, the United States has been taken over by a right-wing theocracy. The new government has reintroduced the biblical practice of forced surrogacy to rebuild the population. For my evangelical, freedom-loving friends, you can also find your God's endorsement of rape and bondage in the Book of Genesis. The Handmaid's Tale is essentially a page-turning tour through the, every conceivable person's nightmare: loss of independence, subjugation at the hands of men, rape, violence, losing a child, or being thought of as less than for being childless. All is state sanctioned. I would say pretty relevant stuff, you know, considering recent events. Handmaid's Tale is a recipe book for how to create a dystopian nightmare, but it's also a recipe book for how to resist one. Many teenagers cannot live as their authentic selves, often due to the authoritarian rulers that they also call parents. The only safe space for free thought is in their mind until they return to school. Your parental rights are not permitted by law to infringe upon mine, especially through government force like removing books from shelves. That is my right under the Constitution. Just because I believe that authoritarian parenting is too punitive, lacks warmth, unconditional love, and the nurturing that children need, I don't tell you what to do with your kids. You can control what your child can check out at the library, so use it. You cannot dictate other children's access. Denying students' access to books is an unconstitutional restriction on speech. And before you think you're a constitutional scholar or spend your hard-earned money on hiring a lawyer like Tim Anderson to sue the schools, hiring a lawyer like Tim Anderson to sue the schools, none of these books meet the Supreme Court's three-pronged standard for material to be considered obscene. Thank you. Have a great day.
Vice Chair Melnick, that was the last speaker for this evening.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to information, and tonight we have three items, and we will start with the notification of intent to apply for federal grants for school year 2223. And our presenter this evening is Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Lorena Kelly, and I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Elementary Teaching and Learning, and this evening I will provide you with an overview of the 2022-2023 Federal Grant Application Programs authorized under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. Federal guidelines require school board approval of these grants, and the Virginia Department of Ed has established an application deadline of July 1 for this school year. This slide provides an overview of the past, current, and projected funding amounts for each grant. The final 2223 award amounts for all grants will be determined at a later date. Level funding amounts based on this year's awards are used for the purpose of developing the 2223 application budgets. The Title I Part A grant is anticipated at just over $11.3 million. This application was prepared, and schools were selected to be Title I schools using free and reduced meals data, as well as data from direct certification reports. Title I Part A funds provide additional financial assistance to schools with high percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic content and achieve academic standards. The 2223 application includes Title I and pre-K support staff and resources, as well as instructional staffing allocations beyond the division allocations, as indicated on the slide. Professional learning for instructional staff, family engagement supports, and initiatives are also included in the application. Additional funding for instructional supplies and resources, tutoring, field trips, and summer programs are included in the grant application. A memo dated May 2, 2022, was sent to the board with the administration's recommendations for schools to receive Title I funding for the 2223 school year. The Title I Part D Neglected Delinquent or At-Risk Youth Grant is anticipated at just over $142,000. The purpose of this grant is to improve educational services for neglected and delinquent children and youth under the age of 21 in correctional facilities, and for other at-risk populations to prepare them for secondary school completion, training, employment, and further education. In addition, the funds are used to support students residing in delinquent facilities, to support the transition of students from those facilities and the Virginia Beach Juvenile Detention Center back to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, including Renaissance Academy. And lastly, it's also, it also supports the dropout prevention programs. Title II Part A is anticipated at just under $1.7 million, and the purpose of this grant is to increase academic achievement for all students through improving teacher and administrator capacity. The Title II grant will fund 18 instructional coaches as either literacy leaders or math coaches to serve in elementary, middle, and high schools. Title III Part A is anticipated at approximately $210,000. This grant is utilized to fund the salary and benefits of English learner instructional specialists. The specialists assist ESL and classroom teachers with instructional support, as well as provides professional development for ESL and classroom teachers. The grant also provides funding for educators to attend professional learning relative to English learners and best practices. The 2223 application includes funds to support stipends for English learner family engagement liaisons and to support family engagement activities. Additionally, the grant will fund Elevation, which is a digital platform that allows teachers and administrators to access data, support digital meetings for student accommodation planning and monitoring purposes, and provides federally mandated documents in multiple languages. The Title IV Part A grant is anticipated at $833,000. Aligned to the Division's Strategic Action Agenda, this grant funds are intended to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity of school divisions to provide students with access to a well-rounded education, improved conditions for student learning, and effective use of technology. Supports from the Title IV Part A grant will include providing material resources and training for safe and healthy teachers and students, instructional tier for summer, for summer school reading intervention programs, summer camps, virtual and face-to-face tutoring, fees for free and reduced AP and IB students, integrated systems of support and graduation labs, and tutoring to increase academic support and graduation rates. Thank you for allowing me to present this information to you this evening. We stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you very much. Just one question. I've, I've never heard the term graduation lab. What is that? Graduation lab? Dr. Robinson could share that information with you.
So many of our schools have graduation lab coaches, have graduation coaches, and so using the Title IV funds, we've added graduation lab coaches to support student dropout prevention. These coaches work specifically with students to help ensure that they are on track for graduation. They provide them with tutoring supports. They make sure that any type of additional support that they may need are available. And so we used our data, and we put those in our two schools that at that time had the lowest, or the highest dropout rates, and that was, we put them in Kempsville High School and Bayside High School.
Thank you.
Okay, and for her encore, she will also let us know about the summer learning update.
Good evening, everyone, again, and I am here with actually Adrienne Day, our Director of Student Services, to share information about our summer learning opportunities this summer. And I am happy to announce that we are continuing the robust summer learning opportunities that we provided last summer. We have summer opportunities for all students pre-K 2, pre-K through 12 to accelerate student learning and provide a strong start for the 2223 school year. Like last summer, all elementary students will have access to the Summer Learning Boost site, which will go live on July 1. Current pre-K through 5 students enrolled in Virginia Beach City Public Schools for the 2122 school year are able to access our Summer Learning Boost website, which contains weekly numeracy and literacy lessons throughout the month of July via ClassLink. Each week, we will release lessons so students can log on and click on lessons that they'd like to do, which will reinforce skills and concepts from the previous school year to ensure that they have the opportunity for additional review and be ready for entering the next grade level. The lessons are aligned, engaging, and asynchronous, so they can be viewed and completed at any time that fits a family's schedule. In addition, parent videos are posted each week to explain the learning intentions and focus for each lesson, so parents understand the purpose of learning and can also extend the learning in other ways. These videos are also available in Spanish. Also, like last summer, learning camps are being held at select sites. All Title I schools will implement summer learning camps, and 24 additional elementary schools will implement summer learning camps. The same four-and-a-half-hour structure will be used as last, as last year, with literacy, numeracy, and inquiry included in throughout the day. Schools who are not implementing summer learning camps are provided with funds to support summer learning programs and activities such as mini-camps that are designed to serve students at each, at those individual schools. Schools are continuing to prepare and will provide learning opportunities between July 5 and August 19. And here is a quick little video that will show you the Elementary Summer Learning Boost website and what parents are able to see.
No.
Oops. This may take just a moment. That's okay. We can proceed if you would like, and we can come back to the video. We could just keep moving. Thank you. Sorry about that. Our secondary summer learning opportunities. In middle and high school, students who need a repeat course for promotion will report to a school based on clusters. For middle schools, students will report to either Lanstown Middle School or Plaza Middle School. There will be two face-to-face session opportunities, June 28 through July 14, and July 18 through August 2. High school students who need a repeat course for credit or promotion will report to either Lanstown High School or Bayside High School. They too will have two face-to-face session opportunities, again, June 28 through July 14, and July 18 through August 2. Students who plan to take a course for the first time, they will utilize the Virginia Beach Digital Campus, and the course session is from Tuesday, June 28 through Monday, August 15. These courses are full-year courses, and the lengthier timeframe is needed for the new course content. Registration for both programs, face-to-face repeat sessions and the first-time course offerings, will open on May 24 and end on June 24, and parent, 21, excuse me, and parents will again use the RegWorks web, web store for registration and payment. Additionally, in secondary, they will continue to have the Summer Learning Boost courses that were offered last year via Schoology, and they will also have access to summer learning funds for mini-camps to support AP and SAT prep. Reading intervention and STEM camps will also be available in Title I schools. Oops. Sorry. For our students with disabilities, they receive the majority of their special education services in general education settings. Therefore, many will have the opportunity to participate in the general education summer programs that are offered throughout the summer. Some students will receive extended school year or E S Y services. Consideration of E S Y services is part of the I E P process. These services are the individualized extension of specific special education and related services that are provided beyond the typical school year. E S Y services may be delivered through a variety of settings and methods, and it's a continuum of services. The I E P team will determine the setting and method based on the student's need. Some students with disabilities will receive classroom-based E S Y services at cluster sites. For the summer of 2022, there will be eight elementary cluster sites and one high school cluster site serving both middle and high school students. Students receiving services through CSEP will receive E S Y services at either one of the elementary school sites or the Renaissance Academy. This concludes our summer school learning opportunities presentations. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you. I just had one question in regards to the Summer Learning Boost, I guess, site. Well, are students retain their Chromebooks through the summer again this year so that they're able to access that?
Yes.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. No problem.
Okay, Ms. Manning.
Do we anticipate any capacity issues specifically around staffing for summer school? How are we looking with that?
We're, we're looking well right now at this point.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody over here? Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Appreciate that deep intel that you gave us. When does registration start for the summer schools? Did you mention that already?
Yes. For secondary summer school, it begins on May 24, and it will run through June 21.
Okay. I see that you said it's going to be in all of our Title I schools and some additional schools as well for elementary. So do you know those schools, and where would they be designated? What part of the city would they be in as well?
So elementary summer school is different than secondary summer school, so I just want to note that. The elementary summer school is not by registration. It is based on a specific criteria. So students are selecting, schools, excuse me, schools select students in those 24 additional schools, and those 24 additional schools were selected based on data. So that is why we have 24 additional sites other than our Title I schools that are providing this limited opportunity for a select group of students in elementary. In secondary, students can register for those courses, and it's more open, and that's why it's done by cluster site.
So basically, you're saying it's on the, the need of that particular elementary school that you're addressing, looking out to its force?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
So I love the Summer Learning Boost so much. So my question is, you update, the calendar's updated weekly. Do any of those lessons time out, or are they, will they be available all summer so if somebody doesn't start until, say, two weeks into it, that they can go back to, to the July 1 lesson and start from there?
I think once they're released, they're available.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Weems.
Yes, thank you. Can you just refresh my memory for the E S Y eligible students? That's obviously done through their I E P, but when is the, like, deadline for that?
I don't know the specific deadline, but I do know that there's a timeline. I don't think, oh, run. She can give you the specific deadline, but yes, that is, there is a specific timeframe that is adhered to, and all I E P meetings are completed by a certain time to indicate students.
So all parents, and everybody knows that those I E Ps in the spring are to determine the eligibility for this program?
Okay. It's a, it's a, it's a conversation at every I E P meeting just to ensure, regardless of what time of the year it is, that that is a conversation that's had so that any student who needs services is able to receive it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thank you very much. Okay, welcome, Ms. Siders, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, for your presentation on new course, Data Science.
All right. Good evening, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I am here this evening to present information about a new course at the high school level for which I'm seeking your approval. The proposed course is a data science course. The course would serve as an advanced mathematics course for students in the division. This course is specifically designed for students who have completed Algebra II or Algebra II trig, but wish to further develop their mathematical skills and pursue careers in business, communications, energy, finance, government, and public administration, information, technology, law, public safety, STEM, transportation, or distribution and logistics. The course will focus on exploring the intersections of mathematics, statistics, computer science, and information technology by exploring the variety of ways that data can be visually displayed and explained. The data science standards of learning introduce the learning principles associated with analyzing big data. Using open-source technology tools, students will identify and explore problems that involve the use of these database concepts and data-intensive computing to find solutions and make generalizations. Students will engage in data science problem-solving structure to interact with large data sets to formulate problems, collect and clean data, visualize data, model-using data, and communicate effectively about data-formulated solutions. The elective class is targeted to a wide variety of students. The course is fundamentally designed for students curious about exploring the intersection of mathematics, statistics, computer science, and information technology. However, data science also has an impact on many different careers, an industry that benefits from analyzing large sets of data and uses data science to gain a better insight. Interest in the field may lead to a career such as machine learning scientists or engineers, data architect, infrastructure architect, and many more. As a project-based learning course, it will also interest students who like open-ended questions and diving deeply into data and the way it can be represented. Data support, both Goal 1 and 3 of Compass 2025, by providing students an additional advanced course option in mathematics and engaging students in a more authentic learning experience. In addition, a data science course would align with the vision and goals of three of our academies. At Ocean Lakes, it'll provide students with additional advanced-level mathematics option that includes computer programming beyond the AP Computer Science classes. At Kempsville, students can explore the increasingly influential data plays in business decisions. At Tallwood, it will provide an additional advanced-level math course focused on programming and coding. The Department of Teaching and Learning are partnering with three schools to pilot the program for next school year. Each school has identified a teacher interested in teaching the course, and they are identifying students who would benefit from the course. If approved, we will take part in a pilot program through the Virginia Department of Education that will provide resources including pacing, unit guides, sample projects, and lessons. There is no cost associated with the pilot. There is no cost associated with the pilot and implementing the course has zero cost to the division. Thank you for your time and DETA hopes that you will be able to approve this course and provide expanded opportunities for our students throughout the division. Thank you for considering this proposal. I would now like to invite Thomas Coker, Secondary Math Coordinator, to join me to answer any questions that you may have.
Mrs. Manning. Thank you so much. This sounds like a very interesting course. Very excited about this. Two questions. Are there any certifications that you can get out of this course?
It doesn't create an opportunity immediately. However, there are two-year degrees, there are five course certificates that this could branch into. So it's really an opportunity to get your feet wet in the process. And if you like it, it's something that you expand upon. And the beauty of data science, it really does touch almost every industry nowadays. Everyone has to be able to understand, visualize, and deeply love data. And so it's meant to be that survey opportunity to get your feet wet and get started with the course.
Great. So it's a pilot program right now, so I anticipate if it goes well, we would be looking to potentially expand it to other schools.
Right. We really wanted to make sure with the move to Canvas and every other option that we wanted to make sure retarded schools that had the need, had a teacher with interest and wanted to do it. We didn't want to increase the workload on any of our buildings. And so our hope is to eventually expand this to all comprehensive high schools.
Wonderful. I love it. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Owens.
You may have just answered my question when you were explaining that. Is there any additional training that's required for teachers who are going to be picking this up? And do we have?
Yes, so there's a three-day training on June 27 through 29 that the teachers are aware of and are actually going up to Richmond to go through a kind of a walkthrough of the course. We really wanted to make sure, this is new for anyone who's teaching this course. And we wanted to make sure that there was that professional network surrounding them, that they would feel supported. And they, like they said, we're literally having lesson plans for every single day of instruction. Now, we don't, as always, expect them to necessarily use that exact lesson. They have the ability to freedom to change it and make it their own and make sure it's meaningful within the context of the MSA or EBA or within the Tallwood setting. But we wanted to make sure that they have that support in nature. They get a stipend for it, everything's paid for, there's no costs associated with us at all. It's a great opportunity for those teachers.
Excellent. Thank you. I was concerned. I know that we have teachers who do want to branch out and teach something new, but then to have to come and have lesson plans prepared all the way through while they're still doing their stuff. So wonderful.
So it's really great to see so many heads nodding. And just the opportunities that Virginia Beach City Public Schools offers. And I'll tell you, there is the beginning of some real economic growth in this city. And that economic growth, truly, this school system has a heavy hand in that academic growth and, I mean, in that economic growth because of our academic growth. And you all should be very proud of the opportunities that you're affording our children. You should be very proud. And I'm proud. I'm proud to listen and to see what you're offering our students and our students are incredibly lucky and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that now brings us to our consent agenda. Tonight, we have a general fee schedule for fiscal year 2223. We have three resolutions: Jewish American Heritage Month, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, School Nurse Appreciation Day. Our policy review recommendations are: One, Policy 3-84, School Lunch and Breakfast Program. Number two, Policy 7-57, Vehicles, Motorized Devices, and Animals on School Grounds. Number three, Policy 7-61, Relations with Governmental Agencies, Public Safety Agencies, and Disaster Agencies. Number four, Policy 7-62, Relations with Governmental Agencies, Department of Parks and Recreation. Number five, Policy 7-63, Relations with Governmental Agency, Voter Registrar's Office. Policy 7-65, Membership and Educational Associations, Virginia High School League, VHSL. Number seven, Policy 7-69, Relations with Non-Governmental Organizations, Colleges and Universities. And number eight, 7-70, Relations with Non-Governmental Organizations, Corporate and Other Private Sponsorship of Interscholastic Activities. And before we vote, I'll go back up to our resolutions. First, the Jewish American Heritage Month. Mrs. Hughes.
Whereas the month of May is Jewish American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate and recognize Jewish Americans' contributions to the American culture, history, education, and government. And whereas on April 20, 2006, the federal government proclaimed that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens. Since arriving in 1654, Jewish Americans have achieved great success, strengthened our country, and helped shape our way of life. And whereas the Jewish people have proudly sustained their identity and traditions while persevering in the face of oppression, discrimination, and persecution. And whereas the Jewish community is strong and continue to devote their skills and energy to make invaluable contributions to our city and country through their leadership and achievements. And whereas issues currently affecting Jewish Americans, such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, harassment, and bullying, must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. And whereas there is a need for public education, awareness, and policies that are culturally competent when describing, discussing, or addressing the impacts of being a Jewish American in all aspects of American society, including discourse and policy. And now therefore be it resolved that Virginia Beach City Public Schools hereby recognizes May as Jewish American Heritage Month and supports opportunities for all students, staff, faculty, and members of the public to honor and learn more about Jewish American history and culture. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board."
Thank you. Next, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Ms. Franklin.
Thank you. I'm not sure why it was chosen, but I'm honored. Whereas the month of May is set aside to honor the contributions Asian American and Pacific Islanders, AAP, have made to our city and country. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are an integral part of our city's great mosaic of citizens. And whereas Virginia Beach has a significant Filipino population, at least 4% and growing, that continues to shape the city's culture. And whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population, comprised of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and supports community and school engagement throughout the city. Now therefore be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support, celebrate, and participate in various school activities during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. Adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 10th day of May, 2022.
Thank you. And our last resolution is School Nurse Appreciation Day. Mrs. Manning.
Whereas school nurses are individuals in the forefront who work with families, teachers, and administrators to ensure Virginia Beach City Public School students have the safest and healthiest possible environment in which to learn. And whereas good health is essential to the learning process and student achievement. And whereas the goal of every professional school nurse is to help each student reach or maintain an optimal level of wellness. And whereas school nurses provide direct nursing care, health screenings, and follow-ups, health-related programs within the school system, health counseling, and act as resources to teachers on health education issues. And whereas school nurses serve Virginia Beach City Public School students with dedication, work diligently to make it a health priority for children during the regular school day. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designates May 11, 2022, as School Nurse Appreciation Day in Virginia Beach. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you. That is our full consent agenda, so at this time I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Mrs. Manning, second by Mrs. Riggs. Any discussion? Seeing none, please raise your hands. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Vice Chair Melnick, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay, on for action, our personnel report and our administrative appointments. Dr. Spence. Excuse me. Vice Chair, you need to do. Yeah, I got it. So at this time, I call for a motion to approve the May 10, 2022 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mrs. Franklin. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Vice Chair Melnick, we have 10 ayes. The motion passed.
Okay, now, Dr. Spence.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. Very excited this evening. Do you have a number of administrators? I'm going to like to start by asking Allison Farnsworth to please stand up. So you all may recognize Ms. Farnsworth. She has served as a teacher both in Virginia and North Carolina, also here since 1998 at Ocean Lakes High School, Kimpsville High School. She's a school, was a school improvement specialist at Kimpsville High School. Most recently, has been serving as an administrative assistant at Kimpsville Middle School. And we're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next assistant principal at Kimpsville Middle School. Congratulations. Nope, don't sit down yet. Wait, just one second. I understand you have some guests. Would you like to introduce them?
I do. I have with me my husband, Ed Farnsworth, my daughter Bethany Farnsworth, and my other daughter Kendall, in Gen C's online service.
Oh, yay!
Excellent. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Dawn Kramer to stand up. Dr. Kramer has served as a teacher across Virginia and here in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Landstown Middle School. She's been an administrative assistant at Brandon Middle School and Bayside Middle School, has been serving for the last seven years as assistant principal at Lynnhaven Middle School. And this evening, I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal of Lynnhaven Middle School. Congratulations. And I think you have some guests as well? Congratulations to you. Next, if I could ask Jennifer Morris to please stand up. Oh, you know what? I got a note. She's, well, is she here, Jennifer? Attending virtually this evening. So I will just tell you quickly who she is. She has been a teacher in Norfolk. She's been a teacher in Virginia Beach since 2008 at Landstown High School and also at Bayside Middle School, was a school improvement specialist at Landstown High School, and administrative assistant most recently at Landstown High School. And this evening, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next assistant principal at Corporate Landing Middle School. Congratulations to her. I know I saw him, so Dr. Ryan Omera is here. He has been in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Green Run High School. He served as Student Activities Coordinator at Green Run High School. Most recently, has been serving as an assistant principal at Princess Anne High School. And we are pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next principal of Tallwood High School. Congratulations. And Ryan, you've got some guests with you?
I do. This is my mother, Carrie. She also serves as a teacher, English teacher at Green Run High School. I have my dad, Dennis, and my mom, Karen, who was a longtime teacher and administrator of Virginia Beach City Public Schools.
She's so proud of you.
If I could ask Vika Harrison to please stand up. So you all may recognize her. Now, she has served across the private sector as a project accountant, a controller, an HR manager, and a financial accountant. She has been a coordinator of accounting at the higher education level and a principal accountant here in the Office of Business Services. Most recently though, has been serving as the coordinator of food services in the Office of Food Services. And we're pleased this evening that you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next director of food services in the Office of Food Services. So congratulations to you. I think you also have a guest with you?
I do. My husband and my daughter could not be here tonight, so I have my son here. He's home for summer break from the university and he's representing the family. His name is Chance.
Thank you for being here. Finally, if I could ask Michael Floyd Jackson to please stand up. So Mr. Jackson has served as an accountant in higher education, as a principal accountant at Old Dominion University. He's been a sales consultant, worked across the private sector in a number of roles. Has been a grants manager here in Virginia Beach in the Office of Business Services. And most recently, has been our principal accountant in the Office of Business Services. And we're pleased this evening that you're accepting our recommendation for him to serve as the next coordinator of accounting in the Office of Business Services. Congratulations. I think he also has a guest. Thank you so much. So we always ask our new administrators to just point out who their guests are because we need our guests to know how much we value and appreciate you and the support that you are going to be providing to our new administrators and the time that they will be giving to their roles. So thank you all for being here. And Madam Vice Chair, that is it.
Congratulations again. Okay, also, under action, we have Virginia School Board Association renewal. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Virginia School Board Association renewal. Motion made by Ms. Anderson, second by Mrs. Holtz. All right, any discussion? All right, Mrs. Hughes.
So this was something that I had brought up because we've been spending money on this every year and we don't vote on it and we don't discuss it. And we're spending what amounts to be a fairly significant amount of money. It looks like between $14,000 and $23,000 a year. And that is just what goes directly to the VSBA. That does not count any hotel stays, travel reimbursement, per diems on meals for any of the trainings that are out of town, which are all on the taxpayers' dime. And it, the VSBA holds itself out as a professional organization. But as was noted earlier and as we've discussed before, this is a lobbyist group with a political agenda. And they typically work against the will of the taxpayers and then the taxpayers pay them to do so. I received here a spreadsheet. I guess everybody received the same spreadsheet. So I went through and added up and it looks like this goes from 2006 to 2021. And this is $305,720.97. We're always looking for money. We, teachers need more money and money needs to reach the students. Yet we have the taxpayers picking up the cost for trainings and lobbying for the board. The board already has a lobbyist, so paying a second lobbyist group doesn't make any sense to me. The last meeting, it was discussed that this helps facilitate this organization, helps facilitate working with members of the General Assembly. But I would have to say that if you are an elected official, it's incumbent upon you to reach out to members of the General Assembly and develop relationships. Bless you. We also discussed training, you know, professional training being a requirement. I have attended several trainings over the last few months and I paid for those. I paid for the courses. I paid for my travel. I paid for hotel rooms when need be. And none of you paid for any of my meals. You didn't reimburse me for gas because it's not your job. It's incumbent upon me and my day job and as a school board member to be responsible for my own training and my own bettering my skills. And I would be very against paying for this, again, to lobby.
Thank you. Mrs. Felton and then Mrs. Manning.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Melnick, I appreciate this time. And I'm only going to speak on a concern that Mrs. Weems brought up concerning the VSBA protocol and the General Assembly. I reached out to Mr. Ted Martin, who is now the president of the VSBA Executive Board. He's also, he also- He's also... He also serves as the chair of the Henry County School Board. I also reached out to Delegate Simon, Delegate Jenkins, and Delegate Davis, who all sit on the educational committee. And I reached out to them to ask them about the protocol. Now, I want to go back to the V S B A Legislative Assembly. There is no policy that goes up to the Hill without it getting into the General Assembly legislative. As you mentioned, you've been at it a couple of years, and you've been in that session. You know exactly how it goes. This Legislative Assembly of the V S B A is all functioning by school board members. And nothing leaves that assembly unless it has been voted on unanimously. It goes before the board, even before a policy can go up. It has to be... It has to go before the legislative board before we can vote on it. It's screened, it's looked at, it's talked about, and then it's placed on the floor at the V S B A Legislative Assembly. I've seen bills go before this assembly, which is adorned with over 200 board members. I've seen bills go before a policy before this assembly, and it does not move forward because everyone do not agree with that particular policy, and it's struck down. I've seen where a policy has come before this assembly, and we were almost dismantled, and it goes back to the committee or it goes back to the school board that presented it. Remember, these policies that go before the General Assembly in Richmond are placed, drafted, drawn together by school boards. Over 134 school board members present these policies. So it goes before the General Assembly after it goes through a screening process with the V S B A Legislative Assembly. Now, I'd like to say to you, after reaching out to these individuals, talking with them, no one knows of any individual that went before the subcommittee and spoke about banning books. And I say this equitably. I say this truthfully and trustily. If you can get past those delegates, legislative aide, you're good. You're good. Before you can go before them, you have to have a sponsor. After you get a sponsor, you have to be announced. And before you're announced, they need to know who you are. You just cannot walk up on the Hill and say, "I'm going to see someone. I'm going to speak." I have been there several times, on several occasions, and I've had to be announced to Delegate Glenn Davis, to Delegate Greenlong, to Delegate Farah Taylor. You have to be announced and introduced. You just don't walk in. So what they're saying to me is, they know of no speaker that came before the subcommittee. If that is a concern, I need to know the date and time of the session, and I need to know the individual's name, and I need to know the Senate person that they talked to who gave them introduction, because no one... Again, I reached out to Ted Martin, who is the president of the V S B A. I reached out to Delegate Simon. I reached out to Delegate Jenkins, and I reached out to Delegate Davis, and no one has heard of this. We are very, very careful. We follow the protocol because such has been discussed. We don't want that to happen. We figure that we hold a board of dignity and integrity, and we mean to hold it there. There have been some things that has gone down between and I'm getting into the way with the NSBA that the V S B A did not agree with, and we address that as well. Again, I would say, Mrs. Weems, that concern that you have, I have no information on it. If you could give me the session that the person attended, and who introduced them to let them... Allow them to go into that subcommittee, we definitely would like to know that because we would like to address that and keep... So we can keep consistency with what we do in our protocol. Thank you so much for this time.
Mrs. Manning?
Yes, so I can speak to that. It was on Senator D. Steph's bill, so it was in the Senate, not the House. So that's probably why the delegates weren't aware of it. It was on his pornography bill, and it was... It was people who were there to testify for or against. So they called the speakers to come up. Anyone can go in. And they asked for speakers to... Who want to speak for or against the bill, and that is a public meeting, and anyone can come in. And I'll see if I can find that video for you and get it to you. So my reason for not supporting continued membership in this organization is the politically charged environment. We saw last year, the NSBA, which is the National School Boards Association, of which the V S B A has been a big part of, and, you know, I know that this board has even gone to a lot of the NSBA conventions. And even though I know the V S B A has said they were going to break ties with them, I know that we are still a part of the NSBA. The NSBA, for those of you who don't know, wrote a letter to Attorney General Garland to label parents domestic terrorists. And I don't want to have anything to do with any organization that's even remotely associated with that. And I think that the political nature, the video that was played earlier where we have V S B A representatives giving trainings and denigrating our delegates, specifically our Republican delegates, because they weren't going after anybody on the other side of the aisle. I think it's shameful, and these concerns were brought to the association. No one ever did anything about it. So that's the reason why I can't support this organization. Thank you.
And Mrs. Franklin?
So I really wanted... Because I missed the meeting last week... Last session. And so I stayed up and watched the last school board meeting so I could be more aware of the comments and thoughts surrounding this vote tonight. And I am conflicted on a couple things. But so let me just start with some of the cons. I actually did address Ms. Rye, our chair, and getting some of the emails from V S B A has been a little bit concerning just because I do feel like that it has been a little bit leaning to one side, or condemning one side, or supporting one side. And she rightly said to me, "Contact our V S B A person," because if that is your opinion, then we need to reach out to them and make sure that they understand how we feel about that, because we are members. And so, you know, and I do agree with that. I agree that we should make sure that we don't put our head in the sand. I firmly believe that if we want to be part of the solution, we've got to be at the table. We have to have a seat at the table. Because I, for one, don't want to have... I mean, if they are having lobbyists that are impacting our education across the state, I feel like maybe from a different angle that we have to be part of that solution and not part of just putting blinders on and saying, "Okay, we know this is happening, but it's not what we're going to deal with," or "It's not what we're going to be a part of," and just try to walk away from that. I feel like we all are sitting on this dais because we feel strongly and passionately about what happens in our division. And I think as much as we go through between emails and just, you know, all the feedback that we receive, positive and negative, I think we feel like that's worthwhile because of the fact that we feel passionate about what we do. And I don't know. I would like to maybe make a substitute motion, though. I do believe that, Ms. Manning, you had mentioned about wanting to revisit this every year. I would like to see us maybe bring this up for vote annually. And, you know, depending on what is happening, I do feel like... Thank you, Ms. Felton, for your time serving as a representative. I think that maybe we need to be more proactive in terms of how we are presenting our case as a division to V S B A, and make our voices maybe more known. And I... That includes me. And I also do agree with the fact that we should not be paying for, you know, for travel and some of those expenses. I'm happy to do that myself as well. So I don't know if there is a way to amend this, or to...
So you offered a substitute motion. So there's a substitute motion on the floor to revisit the V S B A membership annually. And so is there a second for that? All right, second by Ms. Hughes. Any discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm confused. This seems like a completely different motion. So we're voting on whether or not we're going to renew our V S B A, but this substitute motion is... Are we going to do it every year? So first, I think we need to decide if we're going to do it now. And I think that we had already established that we would do it every year, but...
Yeah.
Oh, did we? I didn't see that part. Okay.
We... There's a substitute motion on the floor. If you want to amend it, if you want to restate your substitute motion so that it is voting for the V S B A membership with the amendment of an annual revisit, that's fine. But we need to just clarify your substitute motion first.
Can we determine whether it is a substitute motion? Because initially, what I said is that I think, well, I don't want us to renew it this year, but I also think if we do renew it, it still should come up for a vote every year. I don't think that's a... She wasn't here last week.
Would you like to withdraw your substitute motion so we can restate the original motion then?
Yes. Yes. We will do that.
All right.
We'll withdraw.
So we withdrawn the substitute motion. We'll withdraw the original motion with a little caveat with an amendment. So anyone is free to offer that new motion so that we can move forward.
New motion for what?
As amended. We're going to amend the original motion, which was to vote whether or not we are going to renew our V S B A membership.
That's the motion.
It is the motion, but we're going to have a little...
But additionally...
Yes, thank you.
Whichever way we go, this needs to be voted on every year.
Okay, so that is the motion on the floor.
Clarification. The motion is that you will move to approve it this year, and each year annually, you will...
That is correct. Is there any discussion?
I thought the motion was whether or not. I'm just confused on the...
Yeah, it's whether or not. I'm not moving to approve. It's whether or not to approve this year, but additionally, this conversation needs to happen every year.
Do we need to actually have the motion to approve, and then a...
No, it was... That was amended. And so the problem is, is that Mrs. Hughes added that...
How are you rolling your eyes, Beverly? That's not appropriate.
Oh, gosh, guys. Okay, I ask you to stop. You guys are out of order. Stop. Let us... Let's get through this.
Excuse me.
Let's get through this. The motion on the floor is...
The motion? The motion that was on the Agenda cover sheet was that the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association annual renewal.
Who made that motion?
And then...
Vote whether to approve, not vote to approve.
That's not what it says. What the motion was is that the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association annual renewal. That motion was made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Holtz. So they withdrawn that motion.
We're voting on that.
Then be back. Otherwise, or I think what you were trying to say was that, did you want to offer an amendment to that, Mrs. Hughes?
And you did.
Yes.
Okay. So Mrs. Franklin has withdrawn her substitute motion. You're still on your initial motion that the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association annual renewal. If you want to make an amendment, now would be the time to do it.
Yes, I would like it amended, too. We are voting whether to approve.
No, you can't do that.
What?
Well, if you vote whether to approve or not, it gets a little confusing. I think the motion is that you approve, you either vote it down or not.
Yep. Okay, so are we good?
The motion that remains on the floor is that the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association annual renewal. So you're voting for this year to approve...
Correct.
This year's annual renewal.
That is correct.
You've not addressed next year. That's something you can do. That can be an amendment to that. But the motion on the floor is this year's annual renewal.
Okay, that's the main motion, correct?
It needs to be amended, too, and that it gets voted on every year.
Right. If you... Then, Mrs. Hughes, we make a motion that the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association annual renewal, and that the school board vote each year on the annual renewal.
That is what she asked for.
Yes.
You would need a second to that.
Second.
Okay.
That's Mrs. Owens.
All right. Now, is there any discussion, Mrs. Weems?
Thank you. And, Ms. Felton, thank you for looking into that. I really appreciate that. And I was very familiar with the legislative part of it. My concern was what we had heard last week of V S B A goes to Senate or the House, and when they ask for speakers, and they just go and say, "I'm part of V S B A. We represent 134 school divisions." We don't want that. And just like, we can't go somewhere... We can go somewhere in Richmond and say, "I don't agree with that bill, but I can't go and represent the school board." So that was my concern. And you're saying one thing, and Ms. Manning's saying another thing. So who, you know, who knows? But that was my concern. So regardless of the fact, I have been involved with V S B A for 20 years now. I don't like the partisan politics. I don't like that it seems to be leaning one direction right now. However, that being said, I have participated in workshops. I have presented several times there. Recently, the last recently one was the opioid presentation that then made it statewide. I think that was helpful. I have gone to some of the workshops that I think have been very helpful. I have not gone as much lately because I think it is overkill when we send six or seven, you know, people to those workshops. I'm going to support this. However, I agree with Ms. Franklin. I will be watching. I will be very proactive this year. I'm going to give them one more chance. And if I find partisan politics getting in the way, and them overstepping their bounds next year when we vote for this, I will not support it. But I think that I will support it this year again because I think some of the sessions have been very helpful to school board members and to our staff. And I've been able to present, and I've been very involved with the legislative stuff, both in Charlottesville and in Richmond and in Williamsburg. So I will support that this year.
Okay, anything further? Mrs. Hughes?
So, and that was... Pardon? And Mrs. Felton did go ask delegates, but they did speak in the other house. They spoke in the Senate. So that would be why you wouldn't get that answer from them. One of the multiple problems with the V S B A is that they are a political group. That's what they are. They are a political group. That training that was played earlier, that Stacy Haney, she is the attorney for the Newport News James City County School Board, and she's their chief lobbyist. Their chief lobbyist is the one doing trainings. They are a lobbyist group. And primary in their trainings are, they get new school board members, they get them in there and tell them, "Look, this is what's important. Hire the superintendent, pass the superintendent's budget, and pass the superintendent's agenda." And they have been training board members to be subservient to an employee of theirs because frankly, superintendents are able to join your professional organization, and it has changed the bent of it. It is much easier to move through an agenda with one superintendent than it is to corral between five and 11 board members who all may have different opinions about things. This has been a definite indoctrination, and it is a problem. I also hear people all the time, "We need to get politics out of schools," yet the board's professional organization is, pure and simple, a liberal lobbyist group. If this is who you're following, you will never get politics out of the schools. And you have the taxpayers paying somebody to lobby against the will of the public. That is a problem, and it is unconscionable.
Mrs. Franklin?
I just want to make one more comment because, you know, again, as just getting a fresh perspective, I know that when I first came on the board, I did actually attend a V S B A conference in January that year. And actually, one of the conference topics that I chose to be part of was on collective bargaining. And really, that gave me a really great snippet for some of the aspects of collective bargaining that we have to be careful about. One of the attorneys that actually was speaking said that if we, we as a school board, have to be careful about what we give up as our rights for the board because we will never get them back once we give them up. And I thought that that was really a strong point for one of the reasons that I want to be careful about how we move forward with that. That came from a V S B A seminar. And so I feel like I agree to an extent that we do need to be much more aware and provide feedback when we feel like not everybody is being represented. I feel like that is our job.
but just proactive, I guess, about, about providing that. But I also, again, don't want to put my head in the sand. If they are lobbying, then I want to be a part of that. I don't, I want to be a part of that conversation and not just standing by the sidelines. So, so yeah. So I think for this year, I would like to see us move forward, and I would really like to see us as a board collaborate on, on what is being, you know, provided to Ms. Felton, and what we, what we send up the other direction as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
So was there an amendment to this, to the main motion?
Yes, that's Mrs. Hughes.
So currently, we're voting on the amendment, which is...
Yes, you're on the amendment, which adds, and that you will vote every year on the annual renewal.
Okay. The amendment just adds the words, and we will vote every year?
Mm-hmm, that is correct.
Okay, so if we vote against this, then we're just voting against the amendment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then, then if that fails, then we go back to the main motion, which is whether we're gonna join again this year or not, correct?
We don't have a substitute motion.
Well, if it doesn't pass amendment, then you're back to your main.
To the main motion.
No, no, no.
You can't have, you can't alter the main motion without making it an amendment. So we're voting on the amendment as it is now.
It's not a substitute.
If that amendment fails, then we'd be back to the main motion, which is, which is just voting whether we join or not.
I understand what she's saying. However, we reworded the original motion.
But I didn't, I didn't, I was the one who made the motion.
Okay, we'll do it that way. We're gonna, we're gonna vote on the amendment.
And I did not agree to the amendment.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the original motion. Okay. So the amendment as it stands is, is voting to, to annually, vote annually on our V SBA membership. And before we do that, I just want to offer my two cents, which is, as school board members, one of our duties is to participate in professional development. And I ask that during this year, I think this is very forward-thinking of this board, and I commend everybody for their opinions, and I ask that in this next year that you get involved legislatively. Everybody's allowed to attend the legislative meetings. During those legislative meetings, we have the opportunity to create our own legislation that we submit to V SBA, and we have on multiple occasions been picked up, had some of our ideas picked up, and they were lobbied for in Richmond. Proud of that work that I did with Joel McDonald and Ashley McLeod. And we were honored for some of that work, including some work around special education. Kami has a lot of insight into so much, and I invite this entire board to get involved, and choose to go to a convention and sit in on some of the classes. And lately, it's been a hybrid option. So, yes, Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, just, I just want to, even, even though I haven't attended, I think I've done a couple, couple of virtual V SBA meetings. I do attend educational events. I was at a summit this weekend, so, you know, if we don't go to V SBA, that doesn't mean we're not doing our continuing education, because I am.
Wasn't pointing a finger at all, so I'm sorry for that. And so the motion on the floor is...
And I want to just clarify what we're voting on. We're voting on just add the language to the motion, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
May I just finish what I was gonna say? Well, go.
You can.
Okay. So as I was saying, if we vote no, that means we are voting down the amendment.
That is correct.
Then we go back to the main motion without the amendment. Is that correct?
Right.
So I cannot support this amendment at this time, because I feel like if someone wants to bring it up again next year, they most likely can bring it up again next year and add it to the agenda again next year, just like we did this year. But I don't think we need to force ourselves to have to vote on this every year. This is our professional organization that we belong to.
Okay.
Just like lawyers belong to the bar, teachers belong to their professional organization, and our V SBA is our Virginia School Boards Association. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I just want to say that I don't mind us reviewing this annually. I feel like it's our responsibility as a board to review annually whether our investments are still paying the dividends that we want them to. I'm okay with evaluating organizations annually and seeing if they still represent the values that we want represented as a board. And I feel like that helps hold organizations accountable, to know that it's not an automatic. I do support our renewal for this year, but I'm okay with us taking a look at it annually and renewing as it comes up. So that's my thought.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Weems?
Yes, I totally agree. It is our responsibility. We, we, you know, look at all of our programs, our textbooks. We, we have evaluations constantly, and I think that this is our way to make sure that we're committed to the professional development. And if we're not, we need to, you know, stop it. So I urge my colleagues to please vote for this. And like Ms. Owens said, it is our responsibility to evaluate this organization that we're a part of, that we pay, you know, a lot of money to. And of course, anybody can bring it on the agenda, but we know that sometimes things that are brought up sometimes can't fit in, you know, time sensitive, or the agenda's full, or whatever. I don't want to make it rely on that. I just want to evaluate it every year, and if we're completely satisfied, it's a quick five-minute vote. And if there's problems, it needs to be discussed. So I urge my colleagues to vote for this.
Point of information, Mrs. Lynetti, would this be something that would be part of our policy or bylaws? If we decide to do this tonight and make it an every-year thing, are we dictating part of our bylaws or policy? How are we to assure that if we vote in favor of this, that it will happen every year, if it's not part of our bylaws or policy?
Generally, we would add it to the quarterly forecast at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I can't think of an equivalent where you have it in policy that you will vote on membership or anything. You could make that a policy, but generally, as the 710 is indicating, it's something you just know to put on, much like grants and other things that you know you have to do every year this time.
We have, we have, we keep a quarterly forecast, and you've seen probably that every year in the same timeframe, there's certain things that come up, and they'll always be on the quarterly forecast. So we would just add this to that.
Okay, Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Owens. I have no problem in doing an annual vote. I really don't. This is one of the reasons why the V SBA put the NSBA accountable for some of the things that they did, because we evaluated them every year. Yes, because of the way, or the timing of us withdrawing some of our things from NSBA, we are still allowed to go to their meetings. We can still go to their meetings, to the NSBA, without even being a part of the membership. You just go as a person of interest. But because of some scrutiny that we have with NSBA, and we questioned them, we evaluated them yearly, that is why we made the move that we did when it came to NSBA. We are accountable. So I have no problem in doing that. Ms. Owens, thank you so much.
Okay, anything else? All right, and with that, the motion on the floor is to vote annually for V SBA.
No.
Okay.
The motion on the floor is that you amend the motion... Sorry, three. That the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association annual renewal, and that the school board vote annually on the renewal of membership from the V SBA.
That is not what you said. We're, we're voting on the amendment, which is, and then we're gonna go back and vote on the original motion.
You're adding that second question.
So, right, we're voting on the addition of the annual vote.
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor of a, okay, we're gonna stop right there. All in favor, please raise your hand for an annual vote.
We have eight ayes.
Okay, all opposed?
And we have two nays.
Thank you. All right, it's a vote of eight to two. Now, let's go back to the original motion, which was to, and I have it in writing, on the second page, that the school board vote to approve the Virginia School Board Association, well, that was annual renewal.
Well, that's why I couldn't... You're voting for this year's, this year's annual renewal.
This year's annual renewal. Okay?
And subsequent years. So now we're voting on the full.
The full motion. That is correct. All right, so do I, do I have a motion?
They're moved.
Clerk?
Are we going back to the original motion, which was by Anderson and Holtz?
Oh, okay, that's right. We are reverting back to the original with Anderson and Holtz. As amended.
As amended.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Who was the second?
Holtz.
Okay.
I thought you said you were voting for it.
We have eight ayes.
All right, all opposed?
And we have two nays.
Okay. All right, eight to two, that passes. Okay, and so for our final, for our final action item this evening, the Virginia School Board Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. Dr. Lockett?
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. I'm here this evening to share with you the opportunity for Virginia Beach schools to apply for the annual Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award with the Virginia School Board Association. We are on the action agenda this evening because in order to submit an application for this award, the nomination must be voted on at a formal school board meeting. The application process for the V SBA's Workforce Readiness Award consists of selecting one innovative workforce development program or project, answering five application questions about the nominated program, and seeking school board approval for the nomination, then submitting electronically by May the 16th of this year. You should each have received a copy of the nomination narrative. The program nominated, nomination we asked the board to support is for Virginia Beach Schools' Project Search at Naval Air Station Oceana. This innovative transition program assists military dependents with disabilities to navigate the transition to meaningful independent employment. The program is the joint work of Virginia Beach Schools' Office for Programs for Exceptional Children, Navy Leadership at the Naval Air Station, the Virginia Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services, Virginia Department of Education, Didlake, Inc., and Virginia Commonwealth University's Rehabilitation, Research, and Training Center. The board learned about Project Search in detail from community partners, participants, and parents. During a board presentation in February, the nomination team feels that this program is a shining example of what is possible for young people when communities work together to build a network of supported work-based learning experiences. And we will use many of the lessons learned from Project Search to enrich the work-based learning model for all students in Virginia Beach. We appreciate the support Project Search received from the board, and would like to give special thanks to the board members who were able to attend the recognition ceremony for these wonderful young people held at Oceana in March. And I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share our proposal for the V SBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award nomination. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any questions about the nomination.
Okay, any questions? Mrs. Owens?
Do we know when we will hear back on getting the award?
It will be before the end of May, so we will let you know.
Okay, sounds good.
And it's been a virtual. I think this is the fourth year for the award, so it's been a virtual ceremony the last couple of years, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay. Okay, any further questions? Okay, then, I call for a motion to approve the Virginia School Board Association's Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
Make the motion.
Okay, so moved by Mrs. Anderson, second by Ms. Owens. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you very much for doing this and for, for doing the legwork, for getting, getting into this for us. I was reading the other day, the email that came forward, and was hoping that we would have someone step up and apply for this for our, for our school division. We deserve it.
Yeah.
Having such a great program, and its kids are amazing.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lockett. Thank you very much. Okay, and so with that, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Vice Chair Melnick, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
All right, so now on to committee, organization, and board reports. Do we have any this evening? Mrs. Franklin?
Yes, so the Gift of CAC had a meeting on Monday, May 9, and I just wanted to provide some notes from that meeting. We want to welcome Alyssa Labiak, Dr. DeVries's new assistant. She is amazing and will be quite a great help to Dr. DeVries. Applications for this year for members for this committee are closed. However, we do want to get out the information so that we have more representation across all zones. There is a call to action put out every March with open zones, and they can get more information if interested to apply for the 2023-2024 year. It is a public meeting, so if you are interested, start viewing the meetings for next year. VB Schools gifted, you go to vbschools.com to the gifted, and then the parent and community involvement page. There is a parent-specific webinar on executive functioning that parents can do asynchronously. It will be posted on the gifted area of the VB Schools website by next Monday, May 16. So I just wanted to make sure that we get the word out there. I actually mentioned at the meeting that, you know, I was PTSA for over 20 years, and I didn't even realize that this committee even existed. So I do feel like we need to get much more information to parents through PTSA or other opportunities, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Reminder, the policy view switched its time because you have the Brock Center event on Thursday, so it's at 12:30 on Thursday.
Okay.
Oh, can I, I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Owens for letting us know about the J R O T C. And I was a sponsor, and I'm so excited to see them on Thursday night, so.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, I thank everyone for their hard work and for your attendance, and we are adjourned 7:46.